So anyway, yeah, this is the Kitsap Sun editorial board. We're talking to the city council candidate position one down in Port Orchard. And what we'll do is give you guys each two minutes to introduce yourself. Jim will kind of have a clock and he might wave at you when you get to two minutes. But just tell us who you are, what you've been doing, why you're interested in this job, and then we'll go into kind of some Q and A. So Sean, why don't you start us off?
Perfect. Well, thanks for having me here today. My name's Sean Quichardi and I've lived in Port Orchard since 2003. What brought me to 2003 was a group of partners. We purchased McCormick Woods Golf Course and Restaurant at that time. I've kind of been in the golf and hospitality industry most of my life. Was living in the Olympia area prior to that. And since taking over McCormick Woods and running that operation, just absolutely have fallen in love with the city of Port Orchard. It's been an amazing venue for my wife and for us to raise our two children. I have two children in the public school districts there, South Kitsap School District. One will be a junior in high school, the other will be a eighth grader in the junior high. And just really enjoy the quaintness of the community. And because of that, I've just been extremely active in our community, volunteering in our public schools, volunteering with a group called the South Kitsap School Supporters, where I currently serve as president and have for about six years. And that's an entity that just aligns ourselves with the public school districts to help them in different ways. So we can be their voice probably most visibly as we're active with bond and levy efforts. So it's been great aligning with that. Definitely involved with the Rotary Clubs there in Port Orchard. I've sat on the board with the Kitsap Visiting Convention Bureau, went up to the chairs and was president of that organization. Did the same thing actually in Bremerton with the Bremerton Area Chamber of Commerce. It was the largest chamber of commerce at the time. And went through the boards, on through president, past president of that organization. And I'm just the type of person that likes to be involved in community. I really consider myself a community activist. I'm not one of those naysayers that just sits back and complains. I want to be involved, I want to engage, I want to listen, and I want to try to help communities grow. And pretty much the reason why I'm running for city council of Port Orchard is I really just have sensed this culture of apathy to some extent in Port Orchard. I see communities around us, you know, growing and flourishing. And I'd like to provide that leadership to help our community make some positive change.
Keith?
Yes, my name's Keith Law and I've been a homeowner in Port Orchard since 1997. I built my current home there in 2005, where I got very involved with the city in the process of building my home. And then more recently, I've been more involved with the Tremont Corridor, where they're trying to expand Tremont and put a roundabout in there. And this really affects me and my neighbors. And it's kind of gotten me more and more interested in being involved with city council. And plus, I mean, if you asked me six months ago if I would be here in front of you today, I'd probably told you no, I don't. But, you know, a lot has checked, has changed in my life in this last six months. I worked for Simpson Lumber Company and they were recently sold to Sierra Pacific. And they're going through a restructuring process, it's going to take two years. So during that time, the Trade Act's been available to me. So I'm planning on getting some schooling in. And I figured since I had some free time, you know, I got more time to get involved with the city council. I believe it's something that's going to require a lot of time. There's a, there's a lot of things going on in city council. Last night, last night I went to the meeting and, you know, there was a big outcry from the public there about the downtown area. So there, there are a lot of irons in the fire for the city. And understanding that the city is designated a second-class city by the state, it creates a lot of challenges.
Yeah, I will probably jump right into those, actually. Explain, I'm going to ask you just to follow up a little bit on your Tremont. What was your perspective on that issue? This is kind of with the road widening and some of the issues down there.
Yeah, the big, the big-
How you got involved with that and maybe what your involvement-
Well, you know, they started that just after I built my home and they rezoned it. And really, people didn't even know it had been rezoned. My neighbors, none of them knew. And, you know, next thing you know, we get a letter from the city and they're going to take some of our land there to further widening, you know, which I think is a good deal. I really think it's a good, you know, we need that widened. And but the roundabout, I'm really not too sure about. They were talking about city council, about the roundabout overlay. And there's things I've got to investigate, learn more about. But they were talking about city centers on the overlay. And I really didn't understand that. And I want to, I actually have a meeting with Nick Bonds in the next couple of days so I could learn more about it. But this is, this is a big reason why I'm running.
How did that translate? I guess that's what I want to know. You know, that's one kind of particular issue. City council deals with all sorts of different things. How did that interest go from your neighborhood to caring about the whole city? Or do you just care about your neighborhood?
I do care about my neighborhood, but I, you know, and truthfully, to, you know, as city council members, I feel we represent our city. And where we live has a lot to do with what we represent when we're in the city. And if you've got everybody from one particular area, you don't have a real good representation of the whole city. And in fact, from door belling, I've heard that from a lot of people. They don't feel like they're being represented.
And no one lives in your neighborhood from the city council now?
No. So, you know, I kind of want to be a representative for that area, but also for the city. Because, you know, the small business owners are hurting. And they're up, they were there last night at city council and in uproar about, you know, the conditions of downtown and how they feel they're being squeezed by the city regards to signs and other things that, you know, and it's a real complicated mess.
Yeah, I want to get, we'll get to that downtown and kind of economic question. One other thing, we had another council race here and we had the mayors here yesterday, the mayor candidates. One thing that has kind of come up as a theme is the conflict that's existed between the mayor and the council and kind of understanding the roles of each and who's doing what. So what I want to do is ask both of you, you know, you have been studying this. It sounds like as you've convinced yourself into this. How do you define, what do you think a council member should do? What do you think the role is, what is done most effectively and done the best? We'll let Keith go first then.
Well, like I said, I think they should be a representative of their community, their smaller community and the whole community in large, and be a voice for, and it's not just a community. I mean, you've got, you know, you've got different sector. You've got military there, you've got blue collar workers, you've got retired people. One thing, my dad's a retired veteran in Retsal too. So that's another interest I have and I've kind of helped out them there a little bit. But, you know, we need a representation of all these things. And, you know, I think city council is too polarized in one direction. And I think we need a broader representation.
What do you personally bring to that, especially the polarized part? What do you think you, how do you come and feel that a little bit?
Well, of course, my neighborhood, representing them and being a blue collar worker, I feel I represent them. And I was a former small business owner. My wife actually had the business, but we've worked together at it. And so I understand those people. I know what it's like, what they're going through, their frustrations. And, you know, I don't, I can't say I have the answers for everybody. I mean, you've got two different, you know, people wanting two different things and you try to get one answer for both people, try to come to a compromise. And I think we need a voice that can give us that compromise. Where you, when you're polarized, you're not getting that voice. And I think I bring that to some extent, I think to a vast extent.
How do you define yourself?
Well, so to answer your first question, I think that's part of the reason why I believe that our existing council and our existing mayor have been a bit polarized. Is I think in any organization, and city government is a large organization. It's probably the largest organization in South Kitsap, the city of Port Orchard. And I don't believe that they fully understand and respect the unique roles in that, in that set of governance. And a city council person in the, in the city of Port Orchard is there to represent the entire city. We do not have districts, we do not have boards. And so it's our responsibility to represent the entire city, to make ourselves available, to move throughout the city and to understand the needs of all those unique groups. Any city is made up of diversity and it's our role to reach out to that diversity and to figure out how we can create, you know, good, sound decisions from a utilitarian perspective. The city council's role first and foremost is to create policy. And I think that sometimes is where, whether it becomes a gray area is when a city council wants to be involved with operations or a mayor wants to be involved with creating policy. And it's the city council's job, you know, listening to the people, working with the people to create a policy that's going to guide our city. It is the mayor's responsibility to carry out and meet the objectives of that policy and of that business model, to manage staff, to hire and fire staff, and to carry out that will. And I think when you have those, those clear job descriptions, so to speak, that then you can work effectively and efficiently. And I think right now there's, there seems to be crossover all too often. And it becomes that infighting because it's like people are being territorial. And so I think to be able to set that stage and really to inform, you know, how we can work most effectively between our city council and our current mayor is to define those roles and carry out those roles and avoid getting into areas that you should not be in.
So what do you, what do you personally bring to that? Other than just writing it down on a piece of paper and saying, here's your job?
Exactly.
How do you do that in action?
Well, through my experiences, not only with, with my, my work experience, but through volunteering and through different civic organizations, I deal with a lot of people. And I deal with, you know, our existing company has almost 200 employees. And it's, it's much similar to that, is how do you effectively communicate? And I think we need to have ways that we can go in there, communicate effectively, you know, listen to things. An entire city is, it's all connected. And the Tremont project is going to lead and impact a different project than a parks project. And our schools, although they're not necessarily a role of the government, you know, they have a huge impact. And what we do with comprehensive planning has an impact. And how we treat developers and residents for retired people, emergency response, policing. These are all complicated areas, but they're all connected. And so I don't think you can just go in and just micromanage one project. I think you need to take more of a global approach, just like we do in business, just like we do in life, just like we do with our families. And I think, you know, make yourself available, listen, and try to create a responsible policy as a city council person.
One of the policies that they're talking about right now is the transportation and comprehensive planning and impact fees specifically to pay for some of this in the future. Council is kind of listening to the community a little bit. What's your perspective on using impact fees, charging for development so you can pay for some of the growth that's coming? And then kind of a secondary one we've been asking is the idea of transportation benefit districts, when you have not taxing developers, but taxing citizens to get their neighborhood. This is kind of run along with describing Keith, I guess. Where are you at on those issues? What would you like to see if you're, if you're part of those discussions?
Well, I think there's a lot of data out there that speak to impact fees. Their successes and their failures. This is not a new subject. You can read about this in many, many communities across the state, across the nation. What I think you need to do though is, is walk before you run with impact fees. Because I think the worst thing you can do is put yourself in a corner where you're basically in an emergency situation to have to raise funds. And you start designing impact fees almost as creating a debt service to perhaps some other sort of obligation. And my fear is we're kind of going down that road with the Tremont Corridor, for example. And impact fees will only become revenue to our city if developers start developing and building. And I think there is an opportunity for us to not be competitive in that marketplace. We need to look at who our competitors are for these developers. If they're moving to other parts of the county, if they're moving to Gig Harbor, if they're moving to Bainbridge Island, where that development is occurring. And if we're irresponsible in creating overall impact fees, we could be left with nothing if we scare away all the developers. So where's that balance? You know, these same developers are familiar with impact fees in other areas of our state. They need to have a seat at that table. Our community needs to have a seat at the table. The comprehensive plan needs to have a seat at the table. And to figure out how we can create a win-win on a small level and take baby steps where we can, you know, start implementing some of these fees for, for an overall good. I mean, the benefit, I'm certainly not opposed to impact fees. I just think that there's an irresponsible way we can enact them versus a responsible way.
And with the second part of the question, as far as talking about transportation benefit districts, how much of the load should the citizens bear?
You know, I don't like to try to micromanage, you know, the different areas of people and how they utilize our, our public infrastructure. Our public infrastructure is owned by every citizen in Port Orchard. It's no different than school districts. And we have to have a responsible plan to be able to maintain this public infrastructure. We all own it, we need to take pride in it. And we have to have planning that goes into the future to help us repair these things. And to try to, to divide a community and have this group pay a little bit more and this group pay a little bit less, I don't think it's necessarily full of equality. And I think that's, needs to be a part of our overall city, city funding plan, is to take care of depreciation. That's really what we're doing. We have depreciating assets. And like any responsible homeowner, eventually their roof needs to be replaced, their siding needs to be replaced, and we have to have planning for it. That's when it comes time to, to update and improve our infrastructure that the funds are there and we don't have to treat our citizens differently.
Maybe okay, but draw the boundaries nice and big so everyone's equal.
Everyone plays an equal role with it.
Well, you know, I agree with him pretty much. And one thing I think is with the, the impact fees is, you know, I feel that the city's stuck with, in less than two years, they've got a $3 million grant that they have to start construction on the Tremont. And I think they're under the, under the gun for that. And it's going to cost $17 million to complete that. And I think that's why they're like looking at these things. They, they want the money for that. And maybe, maybe it's time to bite the bullet on that $3 million and forget the roundabout, you know? We, we got our money's worth out of the property, I guess. I mean, I'm sure they did the responsible thing there. So I'm not really big on, on the impact fees. And as far as the transportation benefit, I'm, I'm really against that. I think, you know, you start charging $20 tab fees on every car, whether you're somebody who drives a, you know, a real nice BMW or Mercedes, or whether you're a struggling single parent with kids in daycare. Well, that, to them, it's a big difference. $20 is nothing to somebody that can afford a luxury car, but they got to pay the same amount for somebody that, you know, like I say, a single mom paying $20. $20 goes a long ways for a box of diapers. So, you know, I, I really don't think that's the way to raise money on our citizens' back like that. It's just not fair.
How does the city answer some of the infrastructure questions? Especially when you have things like Bethel Corridor, a lot of money needed there, a lot of work needed there. I mean, I'm asking kind of a specific question, but are there other ideas? Are there other ways that you see cities doing this, a better way to approach some of that long-term need?
You know, I, I don't think every rock's been overturned as far as funding for that stuff. I've got a couple ideas. And, you know, maybe they've looked at them, but, you know, maybe they can be rehashed. But, you know, one of the things I kind of see on Tremont is maybe you could get federal funding for that based on, you know, a evacuation route. I mean, that ball necks there. And if you have a disaster and you need people evacuated, you've got a big problem right there. So, you know, maybe we could get federal funding for that based on that. I, I don't know. But there's, you know, there's other ideas I've got too. That's just one of them. So, you know, and I, I don't know all the details on something like that, but that's just something like that. To me, I think the city's kind of stuck with, you know, downtown and Tremont. They need, you know, those are two big things that need to be fixed. And, and they're dysfunctional on it. They, they, you can't do both really.
One of the things, one of the things the city has fortunately got a lot of money for is from the state for the pedestrian pathway downtown leading out towards Beach Avenue Drive. What's your opinion of how the city went about doing that project? They've kind of found this negotiation with the homeowners there. It looks like they'll be able to build it, maybe leave one, maybe buy some of the others. Do you think the city council did the right thing in that case? Do you like how they're spending the money down there? Is that a good thing to be doing, Keith and Sean?
Yeah, you know, I think anything they can do to make it more attractive. Actually, I think they found ways without affecting the homeowners, from my understanding. So, you know, more power to them. If they can, you know, not step on the homeowner's toes. I think one of the issues was some people probably had complaints with some of those homes that, you know, were a little bit unsightly. But, you know, that's their home, they have a right to that. So the city did the right thing on, on avoiding that.
I would disagree. I don't think that every homeowner was in favor of that project and I think that continues to exist today. And that, that is probably the paramount challenge with, with the city council and local government, is how do you, you know, lay out a plan that could be part of a much, much larger plan and try to appease all the people all the time? It's not always possible. So there are those educated risks that people take, that you're stepping out on a limb a little bit. And you certainly don't want anyone to feel like they're not part of the process. I think that process probably could have been extended, could have been a little bit more transparent, invited people in even more often than they did. But at the end of the day, I don't know that with a, with a city of 500 people, 1,000 people, 10,000 people, 12,000 people, that you're, you're ever going to reach 100% consensus. But I think that's the importance of putting a comprehensive plan together and sticking with that plan and have that plan help guide you to make those decisions and not get really caught off in just one-off pet projects that can become offensive. If it's a part of an overall plan, then I think, you know, you'll let that, you let that comprehensive plan guide you and help make those decisions.
I actually don't know what you meant with the downtown last night. I'm not aware of what happened at the meeting. But I was going to ask that question just in general, we've been asking people. What is, I mean, not that your individual vision drives what's going to happen with the economy, but what do you think of downtown revitalization in Port Orchard? What do you think the council has done well? What should they do more? What would be some sort of policies that would help people down there? Help some of the business owners to be more friendly with them?
You bet. Well, I think the biggest thing that the council and the mayor have not done is they have not been proactive in inviting stakeholders in to help really define a plan that is achievable. There's a cost of doing business. There are things like return on investment, that development, it's just part of economics. And so we need to invite developers in, the same developers that are doing marvelous jobs in cities around us, being responsible with the development, working with the, you know, the governments and the codes within a city. And to sit down with them, invite them in and say, how can we work together to better improve, for example, the infrastructure downtown on Bay Street? And understand exactly what it is they need. You know, some of the things that you hear is that the building height limitations are extremely restrictive and they're basically cost prohibitive for a developer to come in and make a project like that pencil. And so we need to better understand the needs of our, of our developers along with the needs of our citizens. And how do we bring those two to the table, work together to create development? Because really, since I've lived here, it appears that for the most part downtown, like other areas of Port Orchard, because nobody's talking about it. Nobody's bringing people to the table that this infrastructure just continues to dilapidate and it gets worse and it gets worse and it gets worse. And pretty soon we're left with the crises on our hands. I mean, it was almost laughable for years and years and years, the arguments over the facade downtown. You know, it was the facade and what color it should be painted and what. And I just think, you know, we get so myopic in our thinking that we need to have more of a plan. We need to sit down with all stakeholders and understand what it is to create a win-win-win. Because to answer some of these questions like transportation and other funding, you have to realize that sales tax income to all of our cities in this state is a significant portion of our funding. And if we don't attract new development and we don't increase gross revenue and taxing, you know, sales tax into our city, where else does it come from? And so I think there's a responsible balance on creating responsible development that is putting money back into our city, you know, via the sales tax, you know, district that we have, the platform we have in the state.
Okay, yeah, you know, I think first of all, we need to stop the bleeding before we do anything else there. And it's the small business owners that are bleeding down there. We need to make it more easy for them to stay in business, changing the signing codes. I realize that's, that's a real tough issue. I mean, like I said, Port Orchard's designated a second-class city. And Bay Street is a state highway, which really complicates things. And they need to work there first to stop the bleeding before they do. I mean, I agree, we, we need to build it up. But, and another big problem we have is there's, there's one big property owner down there that owns a lot of downtown Port Orchard. And he's not working with the city, you know? He wants things his way.
Can I touch on that for a second?
Yeah, we'll come back to it, yeah.
Sure. And, you know, the, the big problem is that a blight is starting to create down there. You've got Myriots that's been boarded up for several years. And it, it just makes the town look rundown. And it, it's not a welcoming sight. And that's a big complaint about the, the business owners. And if we can make things better for them first, to stop that bleeding, and then, then go from there, I think, you know, that's the direction we need to go.
Would you be in favor of addressing that with some kind of ordinance? And I'm not suggesting anything specific, but Bremerton has done a similar thing in the neighborhood, it's not businesses, but saying, if we see this happening, this vacancy falling apart, dilapidated, we come after you, kind of taking a heavier hand. Is that kind of a place that you need to do that?
I kind of think so. And I've, I've heard that mentioned at, at the city council last night too.
Oh, they brought that up?
Yeah.
Well, that's a classic example of a role of government, is you have a city council that is creating policy which creates, you know, code. And then on the flip side, under the mayor, you have code enforcement. And it's those people, those hired people, that go and enforce the policies created by the city council. So where you have effective policy by the policy board, which is the council. And then you have the mayor managing the staff to enforce, for example, code enforcement. That's how that's dealt with. And for whatever reason, right now, there seems to be this, this-
They need a stronger-
-differing of opinion and everyone's pointing across the table, you should do this. This is the council's job. And the council's saying, no, it's the mayor's job and, and nothing gets done. And we have these dilapidated buildings and that's just a-
You think it's stronger policy is needed?
I don't think it necessarily is stronger policy, it needs to be enforced, right? And so we have code enforcement, it's a department within the city. It's that department's responsibility to carry out the code that's been adapted by the city council. It's not the city council member's job to go knock on a door and say, you're going to do this or I'm going to do this. You know, there's a system of which you operate effectively. And clearly, that, that, that is not happening in our city.
Did you want to comment on the properties on B-
I did, you know? So he made a comment that, you know, this large property owner, which absolutely exists, is not working with the city. I've heard that. And, you know, back about a month ago, me and a couple other people, we called him. And we asked him to come to our community. We actually met at my place of business. And we had a very, very delightful conversation. And he said it's the first time he's heard from anybody involved with our city to reach out to him. And this is exactly what I mentioned with my last comments, is that to be proactive, invite people in and share in these dialogues instead of just assuming someone's unwilling to do something. You need to harness that. And what I left when I left that room is someone that absolutely is willing to listen, is absolutely willing to reinvest in his properties. He did so with, with the public market. So that's evidence, that's who that is.
We didn't get that message yesterday. The mayor was expressing frustration over his repeated attempts to contact this fellow, apparently from Dubai.
He lives, lives in King County. He's a doctor that lives in King County?
This isn't the same person.
It is, no, this is the same person.
He's originally, I think he's originally from Dubai.
I think he flies back.
You know, all I can tell you-
The mayor was expressing his frustration over trying to get ahold of him, saying the guy would not even call him back.
Okay, you know, and that might speak to the current regime of our current mayor. But I will tell you, when we called, he was extremely responsive, was-
One phone?
At McCormick Woods, one phone call, one phone call. He drove and I'm telling you, got stuck in brutal traffic. He was about an hour and a half late for a meeting, so it took him three hours to get here. But he was thankful for the opportunity to sit down. There was no agenda, there was no, let's do this, what could we do? It was just to basically have discussion that we need you, you need city council and the mayor and our community because in order for there to be development, because you're such a major stakeholder down there, you have to be a part of the process. And from what I heard that day, that he has never been engaged by any, any member of the council or any member of the mayor to have those conversations.
When was that meeting?
About a month ago.
What about the way that Port Orchard works with the other communities around here? Because, you know, we can talk so much about economy, but the economy is connected to everything. You were, you know, Mason County, so you know that what the connection is there and you get clients from all over the place, of course. How do you think the council does, or the city does at connecting with the other people that are important to the future? What do you bring to that? What do you see when you look across to Bremerton, Gig Harbor, places like that? Working with the county even? What are your personal skills in that, kind of the need for that, what do you think?
You bet. Well, I've had a, a great opportunity, kind of playing different roles within volunteer efforts, whether it's been Chamber of Commerce or VCB. You know, I was engaged in a, in campaigning for the port of Bremerton here a few years ago. And I've had the opportunity to, to meet these, you know, different elected officials. And I think that's what you're speaking to. And, you know, to work- And uh you know, to work with Kitsap County and the officials there, to work with our local state elected officials, to work with other city governors. I'm sorry, other city um government agencies, city councils and mayors, it is important. Because there absolutely is crossover with some of these challenges, whether it's transportation, with what Kitsap Transit does, we have to be able to sit down. On a county-wide basis basis and look at transit, you know, some of the decisions that we need to make, we need to be reliant on the entire county. And we can't just sit there and just fight for for dollars, I think they also need to be a part of an overall plan that we can stick to and work together. Because when we're we're going after federal grants, if we're going after state grants, we're competing with communities all over the state of Washington. And I think if we can be, again, I'll use the word more efficient, more put together, show that we work well with our neighbors, then I think we have more of a serious seat at the table. And I know in the last uh, you know, six to eight months, I feel like some of that is is breaking down. Um by evidence of the city of Bremerton, you know, making a decision not too long ago to to go at the go at them, go at themselves. And I don't know if that's necessarily the best, it could be, you know, time will tell, it certainly is gonna set a new standard. But uh it's critical that we have communication, because there's just too many things that we do as a community. Whether it's fire services, whether it's through CENTCOM, whether it's through, you know, Kitsap Transit, we're all in together. I mean, not all of these these different public utilities have the same finite borders as each of our cities, there's a lot of crossover, and we need to. To work, you know, effectively and efficiently together, just like our 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 fire districts do. And uh you have to know those people, you have to engage with those people, communicate with those people, earn their respect, work together to achieve something that you could not do by yourself.
Okay, well, this is my first step into politics, so I'm not really connected there, but I I've I've met with the. Kitsap property owners, um you know, and and a few smaller groups, but um I agree that, you know. We we have to work with the the state and, I mean, that's where a lot of our funding, the state and the the county. And um and then there's certainly a a need for understanding for that. But uh my first concern is the citizens of Port Orchard and um in in all regards, their their job one to me.
How do you, maybe, I think that's fine, I mean, everyone's focused on different groups needs to. How do you think the city would do a good job through this council of keeping people informed, making sure they do know what's going on? What's your approach to that, if you're in this thing next year, how do you, you're gonna take your time, how do you think you get information out, honest responses, bring them back, what's the strategy?
Well, you know, um you you can't invite them to the meetings, 'cause they're not gonna come. You know, they 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 just got other things they wanna do with their time, and so really, you have to go to them. And that was the biggest complaint, yesterday there was a bunch of business owners there. And they they said, I don't know any of your faces except for, you know, a couple of you, and um. So y- y- you need to get involved in in community um outreach. You know, it's just like we've got the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Port Orchard, you know, getting down there and just meeting the people, just just being with them. You know, once in a while pop in on the, you know, make it a a point to pop in on those um downtown businesses, 'cause they really feel like they're left out of the. Out of the uh the ring of things there, so you know, you have to go to them, that that's the bottom line, they they aren't gonna come to you.
You know, I think this actually speaks to the business you you all are in, and I think, you know, we're competing out there for messaging. With so much, social media, with, you know, news, and I don't think necessarily the city does a bad job of trying to get the word out. But all boils down to two things, is you have to develop compelling content, then you have to have a vehicle distribute that compelling content. And if people to me are are full of apathy and they really don't care, you have to question, is your content compelling? Does it matter to somebody living on this side of the city about some little project that may be going on this side of, you know, to your neighborhood, it might be very important. Those people are extremely engaged when that's topic of conversation in the city council, but it might not be, people get busy. And there are people out there that say, you know what, I'm happy with the people that we elected, I know they're responsible, I know they're gonna go do a good job. And I'm gonna go focus on these little things, you're not gonna engage an entire city every step of the way. But it is our job is to make sure that we are creating compelling content with the decisions that we that we make, so it is relevant to people. And then, you know, our methods of distribution, it's not that difficult, our city council meetings are on are televised, you all do a wonderful job with keeping current. You know, with some of the issues of facing our local government, you know, there's social media, the information is out there. But I think it's when it becomes compelling to the eyes of the reader or the eyes of the person absorbing that message. That's it, you know, it it like goes further to to Bay Street, and sometimes talking about, you know, struggling businesses throughout Port Orchard. I think it's bigger than that, you know, I think that it needs to be refreshed, it needs to be more compelling, it's supply and demand. There's a lot of residents here that are going elsewhere for goods and services, because our community doesn't offer it. And so sometimes that's can can be a little bit of a slap in the face, but I can look at my business, if I'm not creating a compelling reason for guests to come there. They find places elsewhere to go, and that necessarily isn't the fault of our elected officials, that could be the fault of the business owner. And so, again, coming together, seeing where each can impact each other, benefit each other, to create something you can't do individually, um it's important.
So I'm glad you did ended off on that, but you have said about small businesses, what do you see? Cause you are this, it seems like you get the small business side of it, and from where you're coming from, if it takes one phone call to get one of the biggest property owners. When everybody else, small businesses may see you as not being able to get it, what do you see as the future of you guys helping small businesses in the Port Orchard area?
Well, I mean, I think there's an incredible amount of services, I mean, I I think it all boils down to communication as well. I don't know that everybody fully understands how the decision-making process and the development of comprehensive plans, things that impact. Everyone from residents to schools to development, to streets, to roads, to public utilities come together, there are so many. Uh mandates put on us by different levels of government, the state, and so oftentimes, you know, city council can be truly backed into a corner, they have. They have no option but to create, you know, X. You know, people get up in arms, but they don't understand that the confines being put on them, there is no other decision to make than X, it's basically a mandate. Oftentimes it's unfunded, which take funds away from other things, and so it's about communication. There's certainly, you know, as far as small businesses, there's things we can do from from wayfinding to make sure that, you know, it is not real user-friendly to leave Highway sixteen. And find downtown, you know, it's it's development is changing as you look across the, you know, the country. And people are looking to be right off of of interstates, right off of freeway exchanges, and so it's kind of that. Archaic a little bit, uh non-relevant is to try to develop an area where it could take you, you know, ten minutes off of the freeway to find a a retail corridor. And so things like, you know, uh wayfinding, um objectives, to be able to get people easily understand where they're going to be able to get in and out. Um parking, parking's a huge issue, if I can't go downtown and find parking, then I'm probably gonna go elsewhere, because I'm not gonna find a place. You know, half a mile up the hill, walk all the way down to Bay Street, then to try to have to take my goods with me and walk. You know, up a forty-five degree incline with a, you know, someone who might not be able to physically do that, so. Uh again, it's understanding the concerns and and adopting those into our comprehensive plan. You know, listen and see where we can make benefit, public benefit, but it's not just about creating benefit for one segment, it's not just about the small business owner, the large business owner, or the retired person. We're all in this together, we all own our city infrastructure, and we have to find a way to get enough stakeholders with this compelling content I'm talking about. So you have enough people giving feedback to create responsible policy.
Um yeah, um I I think helping the the people, we need to make it. Um certainly need to make downtown more attractive, I mean, certainly getting rid of um. Lights that are down, boarded up buildings and and um there there's empty buildings and and you know. I I think that makes people uncomfortable, um but also some of those empty businesses, if there's some way of attracting. Uh uh businesses, like um I've heard like a an arcade might be a a family fun thing, you know, to attract. Uh families downtown, um o- other things like that. Um and and again, like he said, the the parking is a big problem, but uh you know. You you just gotta make do with what you got and and try to um facilitate. The the business owners like, you know, lowering, I mean, not lowering, but yeah, lowering the restrictions on signing, just really a huge issue with them. That that really doesn't seem like that's um not doable, I think that would help them out. And and certainly, you got you gotta show them that you're you're working for them, so um. Any anything in that regard, certainly things that raise the property values, I mean, derelict buildings don't raise, well, I can't count derelict buildings, but. Boarded up buildings is not doing anything for property values down there, so we need to make it more appealing.
I have a question on the annexation, and what is your position on that, should you further annex or why yes or why no?
You know, I I think the city is having growing pains as it is, I don't think we we should annex anymore. I think when you annex, I mean, sure, you bring in more revenue from, you know, other areas, but these other areas also have their needs too. And so you you've gotta fix their problems too, so you're really, you're you're not gaining that much through annexation, and I think. We need to take care of our growing pains now, rather than try to grow anymore.
I think the way the UGA was developed was was developed with absolute annexation in mind, and that is not going to stop, we're gonna see more annexation. However, a city has no place in in creating the annexation, it is the will of the people that live in that area to come together. There's a very, very simple procedure on how annexation works. And when they, when it follows those steps, and these people want to annex into to a city, then I then I think it's our responsibility is to follow that policy and allow that to happen. I mean, there can be consequences, we have to understand, so we don't encounter unintended consequences. But if you look at the UGA, the way it was designed is to take a lot of these rural areas and bring them closer together, and so I think to just say no to annexation. I don't think that's responsible.
I'm gonna let you guys give us um a last statement, if there's something, sometimes we don't touch something that maybe is important to you, if there's something like that, please share it with us now, and then. Kind of leave us with, um I I never say take a shot at the other uh person, but what makes you, what do you think makes you different, what makes you stand out? Um to a voter, and uh we'll let Keith go, and then Sean finish?
Yeah, um certainly, I I think um what makes me stand out um is that I think. You know, I am more of a the average person that I think I wa- that's who I wanna represent, I wanna represent the average person in Port Orchard and give them a voice. I think um, you know, being a blue-collar worker and, you know. A struggling homeowner and, you know, somebody who's forced to go back to school. Kind of puts me in a a a situation where a lot of people in Port Orchard find themselves in, and uh I I wanna be their voice in the city.
You know, uh I would just caution you of of throwing out labels, the average person and blue-collar, I think that again is what happens to divide communities, I mean. I think you and I probably have a lot more in common, just like the rest of the community have in common, my wife just went back to college, I'm paying, you know, ridiculous amount of student loans, I've got. Two kids in school, and my daughter's gonna be going into uh, you know, a community is about addressing the needs of everybody within that community, I don't think we need to to draw divides. I think we need to to end those divides and bring bring people together, and you know, stop with it, stop with the labeling. And uh, you know, a community is so codependent, codependent on so many, so many functions. You know, I've been a huge advocate of our public schools for so long, um I I've had such a wonderful experience with my kids in the South Kitsap School District. But it has a terrible reputation, terrible reputation, some of that is earned, and some of it's just people driving by and looking at the looking at the dilapidated infrastructure. And so, look how public schools play such a role to the community of Port Orchard. I can't tell you how many times, because McCormick Woods, that area uh where my business is, has seen tremendous growth the last few years in residential housing. And as people are coming through, I get a chance to meet, when they stop into our restaurant, they stop into our golf course, and one of the first things they ask when they have kids, what are the public schools like? And I try to get the message out about how wonderful our faculties are, how wonderful the services that they provide are, but oftentimes, they can't get by the stigma that's there. And uh we've done little to to change that into, again, that responsible planning to be able to take care of the public infrastructure, we all own our schools, it's our community's responsibility. You know, to keep them up, and my fear is getting to the point where it's gonna be crisis mode again. But that little thing like the school, it impacts whether a developer built a house, or somebody buys that house. Someone were to buy the house and there were impact fees, those impact fees make it to the, you know, intended destination, there's a lot of sales tax income that are going back to the city. You know, now you've got a family of four living in Port Orchard, spending money in Port Orchard, that creates sales tax back in. They keep their schools in district, which is bringing additional state funding into our district versus them transferring out a district, which I know a ton of our kids do. They attend schools in Peninsula School District, or Gig Harbor School District, or Central Kitsap School District, and it's amazing the unintended consequences. So again, it's about pulling a community together and looking how, you know, the flow of these things and the impacts that we have. Bringing all those stakeholders together to build a plan to start moving Port Orchard forward. And I believe because I have been extremely engaged in this community, that I know who those people are, I know they're excited to join me and others at that table. And see if we can start creating some intelligent dialogue and some uh thoughtful dialogue, some thoughtful planning. And start moving down the right direction, that's what passions me to join the Port Orchard City Council.
All right, thank you guys for coming in, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.